Good morning and welcome to the Pocatello City Council Work Session of September the 13th. Mayor Blad is at another obligation, he'll be joining us shortly. He's asked that I conduct the beginning portion of the meeting as the council president. We'll begin with a roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Adamson, Bray.
Here.
Gina.
Here.
Lurick.
Here.
Johnston.
Here.
Manam.
Here.
Blad.
The first item on our study session or work session today is a report from the Historic Preservation Committee. We'd like an update from this hard-working group.
Good morning, Council. I'm Terri New. I'm the Assistant Planner for the city and I am the liaison for the Historic Preservation Commission. And this is Nick Nielsen and he is the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. And I will let him talk to you.
Thank you, Members of the City Council. We're happy and grateful to be here. First of all, I wanted to acknowledge and recognize the contributions of our City Council Representative Linda Lurick, who has faithfully attended our meetings and contributed to our many activities and we really appreciate her. With regard to work that we have recently performed, we have continued the design review of exterior alterations in the Old Town Historic District. In 2017, six applications were reviewed. So far, in 2018, nine Certificate of Appropriateness have been reviewed. These are mostly for signs, but the last one that was reviewed was to remove the wooden facade from the Shanghai Cafe building. It has been removed and we encourage everyone to go by and see it.
It's amazing. I saw it this morning coming.
Gorgeous.
They were scraping with one of those machines that shoots water.
Oh.
They were power washing. Thank you. They were cleaning it up this morning.
Oh, good.
It has been restored to be a beautiful building. We are continuing our partnership with Old Town Pocatello on projects to improve and promote the Old Town Historic District. We have a Commissioner attend the Old Town Design Committee meetings when they are held. We are continuing our partnership with the Relight the Night Committee. Staff attends the Relight the Night Committee meetings on behalf of the HPC. We are partnering with Parks and Recreation to preserve the Brady Chapel. There are a few things we have done this past year which include the following. We've had a self-guided tour and scavenger hunt at Mountain View Cemetery with the treats in the Brady Chapel on October 13th. We've had an open house at the Brady Chapel on Veterans Day and Memorial Day. We've had training and cleaning of the headstones. We have partnered with the Scout Troop to place wooden blocks with flags and flowers in them on the graves of veterans from the Spanish-American War and the Civil War on Veterans Day and Memorial Day. We are planning a self-guided tour of Mountain View Cemetery with an open house in the Brady Chapel on October 14th from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. On October 15th, and this is a new project that we're trying to get together, we will have, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM, we will have a special event where we will have actors stationed by eight to 10 grave sites and they will be portraying the individuals that are interred there. We will host an open house at the Brady Chapel again on Veterans Day. We have hosted an open house at the Gray House Bus Depot for interested individuals downtown. We have also hosted a meet and greet for downtown property owners where we receive feedback from them. We are now considering the possibility of hosting open houses in the historic neighborhood districts and providing information to those individuals who have historic homes about restoring and remodeling them. We hosted a Historic Preservation Archaeology Symposium Conference at ISU on April 28th this past year. The theme was Historic Pocatello People and Places. We are planning on having another conference in 2019.
I would like to say that our symposium we had this spring was, had the largest attendance that we had had. It was consistently 50 people throughout the day, people coming and going in. I think prior to that it was 25 to 30. And the feedback we received from it was very positive. People really liked learning about the people and the places, specifically about Pocatello and not just the state of Idaho. They really liked it focused on Pocatello. So I think we found our niche there and we will continue doing that as well.
And we really appreciate the Members of the City Council who attended that meeting. It was great to have those people there. We are in the process of developing a Historic Preservation Plan that will be before you for adoption in the next month or so. And finally, we are still interested as a commission in getting the Gray House Depot restored so that it can be reused. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Of those applications you talked about that were reviewed, were they all approved?
Yes, they were. They were all approved, some with modifications, but I believe that the individuals that were presenting the applications received those applications warmly and well, and I think it was a good process this past year.
Any other questions or comments? I want you to know that Linda has kept us informed as we've had reports regularly of her visits to your meetings, so we want to compliment Linda on her excellent service to your commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that report. It's outstanding.
Thanks.
We'll now call on our Planning and Zoning Commission update. Representatives from the Planning and Zoning Commission will discuss the commission's goals and projects as well as council's policies and expectations. Welcome.
Good morning, Council. Matthew Lewis, Senior Planner. With me this morning, I have Ryan Satterfield, who is the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. They do an excellent job. And he's going to go through what has been a busy year and just bring the council up to date as to where they have been at this point, so.
Very good. Well, good morning, Council. Good to be with you this morning. I just want to review a few things. It has been a very busy year, like what Matthew has stated. We have processed 11 preliminary plats, a total of 243 lots within the city of Pocatello, the largest subdivision in the North Gate Development, proposed 100 lots. And in comparison, last year, we did seven preliminary plats, and so it was a significant increase.
Is that a calendar year?
Yes, it is. There's a total of four rezoning applications that we processed that were reviewed with findings of fact and recommendation provided to the council that you saw. Four rezoning applications were also considered in 2017. We did one annexation application, reviewed with findings of fact and recommendation provided to the city council. There's a total of three conditional use permit applications and two conditional use permit applications were reviewed in 2017. The area of city impact we discussed in a public hearing was held just last night to discuss the expansion of the area of city impact north and east of Chevick Road in the Satterfield neighborhood. And then two preliminary plats are being reviewed in the meeting towards the end of the month, in addition to holding another public hearing for a rezone request. For this year, some of the goals that I would like to see our commission focus on, and we've had some discussion about, is that of having more interaction and discussion as a commission. Sometimes, especially as we get new commission members, they are a little reluctant to perhaps voice their opinion. And so with further education, they do feel a little bit more confident about talking about specific items. And so goals would be to do that, further education, so that commission members are more comfortable discussing items. We try and have discussion on things and I believe that the public, as well as the applicants, do deserve to know why we vote certain ways and what our views are of their application. Sometimes in the past, perhaps we've been very efficient and perhaps a little too efficient in moving through some of these applications, and so we'd like to make that a goal to make sure that there's decent discussion that is held when votes are taken. We've seen a fair, and I think this is normal, a fair turnover with commissioners. Unfortunately, we've had a few that have had to resign because of other things that are occurring in their lives. And so we'll get new commissioners and then end up needing to make sure that they are trained and up-to-date on everything that is happening. And, you know, to do that, I believe that the staff has been very supportive in providing the proper materials and study sessions and whatnot so that we can continue to, I guess, receive the education that is needed for the commissioners to do the job that they've been asked to do. There's a great variety of background on the commission currently, and I think that that is good. It gives very good insight into all sorts of different things as they are happening throughout the city and as we see those, we're able to have discussion on that with different backgrounds. And so I think that that is good. But again, keeping those commissioners informed with what processes are and land uses are is one of the challenges. I believe that many come in, applicants as well as commissioners, as well as the general public that attend our meetings, fairly ignorant as to how planning processes work and what the rules are and whatnot. And so continuing to educate people through our meetings as well as any other means possible is what we would like to continue to focus on. That concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
We still have, is it one vacancy right now currently? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So yeah, as Ryan indicated, one of the things, because when we get, especially last year, I think we had about four new commission members, and the first thing that we did was, the staff was to have a work session just to train them. AIC has some videos that they've done which are very, very helpful. And it's about 28 minutes, but it gives you a lot of background. And then we have just, you know, your typical paper-type information that they can have. So, but we always appreciate anybody that, you know, all the commission members and the time that they take, because it is, it is time in their schedules and so forth, so they do a good job and we appreciate it.
Do you see any commonality in the reason for the turnover?
I think as Ryan indicated, you know, like we had just one commission member who's just had family issues going on and just needed to spend more time with his family. So, you know, again, that's that time commitment. And so I think that's what you find quite often. And then there's been other commission members where, I mean, in the beginning of my career where I'm on the commission, and then they came back and then they're like, okay, I'm kind of, kind of done. And so we've had some commission members that have been on the commission for some time. And so that's kind of what my experience has been.
Any other comments or questions to direct towards this duo of outstanding men?
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Big job.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Item number four on our agenda, North Pocatello Test Wells Update. Representatives from both the Engineering and Water Departments will present an update to the council regarding the North Pocatello Test Well Project. Somebody has to take charge.
Well, good morning, Mayor, Council. I'm joined with Skyler Allen from the Engineering Department. I'm Justin Armstrong, the Water Superintendent. Today, we wanted to give you just a little bit of a background on the exploration that we've done in the North Pocatello area with three sites specifically. I'll turn the time over to Skyler Allen. He'll provide you with some details.
Morning, Council. It's a pleasure to be here and hopefully we can help increase your understanding of where we're at in this process. This water supply exploration was undertaken because of our anticipated need for new water supply. Our facility planning document, which was completed in 2016, recommended developing a new water source. This source is specifically to address an area of our system where we lack redundancy in our supply. And also, there is a long-term projected deficiency of supply for the Highland area. And that excludes the North Gate area development, because that study was completed prior to the initiation of that project. We have looked at some of those numbers of what, including North Gate, would involve, and obviously that just exacerbates that long-term projected deficiency in that area. So previous to this, there was some work done to try to identify a source of water supply for that area. In 2013, we tested an inactive city well that exists on Appaloosa Street. That well had pretty good production capacity, about 1,600 gallons a minute was projected that we could produce from there, which is a decent well supply. To be a reasonably reliable well supply for the city of Pocatello, we need to be somewhere in the range of 1,000 to 2,500 gallons per minute. If we get less than that, it's not very efficient for us to produce the water. That site did have elevated nitrate and arsenic, which was at the MCL. MCL is the maximum contaminant level. That's the regulatory maximum that we are able to have for a water source. It's not ideal to be at the MCL, because any variation in that could put us into a situation where we're violating the regulations. Additionally, you know, arsenic does have health hazards associated with it, and we certainly want to minimize those type of contaminants as much as possible within the water.
Could you tell where the source of that contamination was coming from by?
So arsenic is a naturally occurring element. It comes from the minerals that the water is migrating through within the soil. It's not a human-caused contamination, it's just the naturally occurring minerals within the earth in that area. Typically arsenic's associated with volcanic deposition, and so somewhere within the subsurface there where the groundwater is migrating through, there's some long-ago volcanic deposition and that's picking up the arsenic and carrying it into the water. There is some potential that if we were to produce water off of that well, that arsenic level could change. There's a lot of variation. It also could go up, right? It could decrease, it could increase, we just really don't know what it would do. But it's not ideal for domestic water supply. There are some other things we can do with that water, which we are also looking at. Specifically, we've considered utilizing that well for irrigation behind the golf course. There is a fair amount of effort involved in making that happen, but it was used that way in the past and it could be done again.
Did you say the golf course?
Yes, the Highland Golf Course. So in 2014, there was a well investigation looking at the existing sources that were not city sources. This was done by Keller Associates. They identified a few irrigation wells in that area north of Chevick Road and were able to test at least one of those that was still in production. They did find that nitrate, TDS, which is total dissolved solids, iron and arsenic were elevated, but they were all within the regulatory limits. In 2016, we tested the county's well at the Fairgrounds and found likewise elevated arsenic, dissolved solids, chloride and nitrate. And so there are some contaminants of concern in that general area that we wanted to watch as we continued our exploration.
When you say elevated, is it above MCL?
Not above MCL. So arsenic and nitrate are primary contaminants. Chloride and TDS are secondary, which means a secondary contaminant has a recommended maximum level, but it's not a rule. So you can exceed those recommended guidelines, but it leads to a reduction in water quality. So chloride is salt essentially, and so you get salty water that doesn't taste real good. And dissolved solids can be a whole variety of dissolved minerals that can lead to taste and odor concerns in the water. So we try to minimize those because they do lead to less than optimal water quality.
Is there a way to put an apparatus on these wells to take some of that out?
There is. It obviously has a cost associated with that treatment.
What would that cost be if?
We are looking at some of that. Depending on which particular constituent you need to treat, you would be looking at some type of filtration in order to remove those contaminants from the water. If you're looking at arsenic, it has to be something that can absorb the arsenic from the water. Chlorides and dissolved solids are a challenge as well, because they're not a particle that you can filter out. It's dissolved within the water itself and you have to do it with a chemical filtration mechanism. It does have a significant cost in this related primarily to the volume of water that we'd be trying to treat. So it's difficult for me to throw a number on it right up front, but we are considering that as we move forward with the options that we still have. An ideal world would be to have a well like some of our others, which the only treatment that we do is chlorination for disinfection, and we don't do any additional treatment beyond that.
And what does chlorination take care of?
So chlorination is disinfection, so it kills any pathogens that may be present within the water. More specifically, we're trying to eliminate bacterial and pathogen continuation within the distribution network.
Would that be nitrate or is nitrate?
No, nitrate's a different issue.
No, it provides basically an insurance policy against any contaminant that might enter due to a repair or cross-contamination or other things and so.
So is, it's probably a lot more expensive to remove arsenic than it is a nitrate, just to be honest?
It's close to the same process as far as either using reverse osmosis or oil pipe exchange.
What about the issue of temperature? Is that a problem?
So we'll get to, one of the test wells that we drilled did have some geothermal influence. It wasn't large, but there was some, so. Definitely, as you continue north from where we were looking, there is some history of geothermal influence on the groundwater. But when you get north to about two and a half mile, there's a fair amount there. So in the 2016, we identified several potential well locations based on the criteria that are listed here. We have some specific needs for an acceptable well site. It needs to be accessible and work as a well site, be compatible with the adjacent land use. And then the ease and cost of construction, of course, is important for this. And probably most important is the probability of getting good quality and quantity of water. We hired Clearwater Geosciences to help with the site selection. They're a hydrogeology firm, and they assisted us with developing these criteria and selecting which sites to explore for potential well location. We selected three sites initially, which were at on Butte Street at the Gate City Elementary School. In the north developer area, which is on Port enough Developments property, we had a different site prior to that that we had to revise due to some property access concerns. And then on Pocatello Creek in an existing right-of-way adjacent to the Ed Howe Elementary School. So this is a map depicting those locations where the test wells were drilled. So in 2017, we did the drilling of this project. High Plains Drilling was our well driller. The first side of Butte Street, we drilled to 675 feet. We found that there was very high dissolved solids and chloride sulfate and hardness were also quite elevated. All of those are secondary contaminants, but they all are concerns for taste and odor of the water. The water was also slightly warm, which indicated some potential geothermal influence. The temperature log, when we pump tested this well, it was, the temperature was increasing slightly. It only rose a couple of degrees, but that's enough to indicate that we have some geothermal influence on that groundwater. The conclusion from that is that we could get 1,000 gallons a minute or greater of water, but it would be hard and it would be salty. So the conclusion from Clearwater Geosciences was only to use this if we did not have another alternative. We would likely want some type of treatment if we were to locate a well at this site. Second site was in the north developer area. On that site, we drilled to 600 feet. We did not find much water at all, and therefore that was not a good candidate site for a well.
Is there any reason to go any deeper?
We considered going deeper. However, the cost associated with that at 600 feet, we had enough depth on that casing that to continue, we would have needed to reduce the casing size and to continue. So the cost of continuing was significant, and it was determined that we hadn't seen much promise from what we knew about the adjacent land area. Certainly, there is the possibility that if we went deeper, we could find water at or near that location, but it really didn't, when we evaluated that, it was not attractive.
Were that in an agricultural area, are there other wells on that North Gate property that would be examples of water?
There are a couple, and that was that 2014 evaluation that was done by Keller Associates. They looked at those adjacent wells. There's one to the east of this site, which has been capped, and they were not able to test pump, but based on the historic records, it was a little bit deeper than this, about 750 feet, and it produced about 750 gallons a minute, but it was a smaller well than what we would construct. There's a well to the north of this, about half a mile or so, that has fantastic production. However, it's the one that I indicated that it had elevated arsenic, and it is also slightly elevated in the chlorides and the dissolved solids.
Any idea of the water quality of that first one you were talking about, that's east of this?
No, it had been capped in the 90s and they weren't able to take a water sample from that. So the third site is in Pocatello Creek. We drilled to 620 feet. This site was, for the hydrogeologist's opinion, our most promising location for water quantity. We found that it did have fairly good yield, although it was a little bit fragmented. There were a few different zones where we were drawing water. There's elevated hardness, TDS and chloride. We performed some additional testing because it was, you know, the hardness was high, but not as high as what we found in Gate City and the others as well. So we wanted to do some more testing to see if we could figure out how to zone the levels that we would be drawing water from. So we did multiple tests on both the pump test for the quantity of water and for the quality. The conclusion that was reached on this well is that we could potentially yield approximately 1,500 gallons a minute of suitable water, but if we were to bring this well online without treatment, it would be the lowest quality water in the Pocatello water system. So it's not an incredibly attractive option at this point in time. So it's not an incredibly attractive option at this point in time. At the... After we had completed the well and we were going through the process of our additional testing in July, Mr. Mike Seibert, who owns Outback Gulf, which is adjacent to this site, had some concerns that were raised about potential influence of this test well on his irrigation wells. He'd observed a decrease in his groundwater level for his irrigation wells. We did some additional testing to see if we could determine whether there was a potential cause there. On the 24th of August, Clearwater Geoscience and Snake River Wireline came and conducted some downhole testing with probes to measure the conductivity and temperature and a flow meter, which measures the movement of water within that open hole. And they also did a video log of that hole. The results of that, the report from Clearwater Geoscience I provided this morning, that was not in final form last week at the time of submission for the package. However, the results are summarized here in the presentation. We found that there is some shallow aquifer water traveling down the 10-inch casing and entering into the 8-inch casing and flowing down through the 8-inch casing at about 30 gallons per minute. So what that essentially means is an upper area of water is entering that hole and exiting at a lower level within the ground. So we're crossing some barriers within the groundwater stratum that is not ideal. The conclusion from Clearwater Geoscience is that the test well is not the primary cause of Mr. Seibert's water level decline. However, they did recommend that we seal that test well as soon as possible. We've elected the best course of action at this time is to abandon that test well, and we're working to get the driller on site to get that completed as soon as possible. Right now, we're about two weeks out on that. He requires a larger drill rig in order to extract the pipe casing that's in the ground right now, and so we're waiting for availability on that. He's told us we're about two weeks away from being able to complete that. So for right now, the Pocatello Creek site was the most attractive of the three, I guess we would say. It meets most of the criteria that we're looking for. It had the quantity of water. However, it's lacking in the water quality. As I mentioned, if we were to bring it online as a production well, it would be the lowest quality within our system right now. In addition to that, the observation that we are... We have different water production zones within the ground. We cannot connect those hydraulically, which means in order to develop this well, we may not be able to get it to that 1,500 gallons per minute of production capacity because we wouldn't be able to draw from all of the layers that were producing water that we initially tested. Our next steps, we've contracted with Murray Smith Associates. They are the on-call engineering consultant for the water department to complete a next step evaluation of our supply alternatives. We still need to find a water supply in that area. So right now, we're looking at whether it makes more sense to develop that well in Pocatello Creek and include water treatment associated with that, or look for a site that is out within... More within the valley floor where the rest of our wells are, and we have a better understanding of the hydrogeology, and find a site there, and then construct a booster station and a transmission pipeline to convey that water up into the bench area. We're looking at three possible locations for a booster station and that corridor for the transmission pipeline. And then, as I mentioned, that booster station would coincide with development of a supply source on the valley floor. We do have a couple of locations that we're considering right now. One in which we would potentially drill another test well, one in which we have a well that's existing that is not deep enough and would need to be redeveloped in order to be used as a source. But we do have a better understanding of water quality at that location, and so that works in our favor as we consider that. We have a meeting on the 25th of this month with Murray Smith to receive an update on their progress with this. Their evaluation will include costs, projected costs comparing these alternatives for the water supply. That is the end of what I have to present. Do you have some questions?
It looks to me like we're moving into an era of far higher production costs if we've got to boost water out of the valley up to there, have to establish a pipeline to supply. We have in our policies, our ordinances, that people either come into the city with water or they can buy water from us. Are we way low upon what we're requiring as part of annexation for water, buying water from us, if this is our solution?
No, I'll take that one. Part of those annexation fees were developed based on market rates of what water rates were being sold for. I think we are right in line with those numbers. Of course, we should evaluate those on a yearly basis to see, you know, what other broker deals are out there and compare those, and those should be adjusted.
Well, there's a difference between what a water rate is to acquire the water and what it is to deliver the water.
Right.
And it looks to me like if we've got to deliver water much higher from the valley floor, it's going to cost us a lot more.
You're correct, Councilman, that, you know, we're seeing costs of construction rise significantly right now, and those costs we don't expect will decrease in the future. The mechanism of delivering water that we're discussing, which is producing on the valley floor, hitting a booster station, pumping it up to a tank, is the way the entire water system functions within our City of Pocatello Water System. All of our supplies right now are within the valley floor, and they all produce into the main pressure zone of the system. And then booster pump stations pick them up and convey them up to tanks on the benches and then feed down into those neighborhoods. This would be simply continuing that same methodology of providing the water supply into that area. We are looking to try to provide redundancy to that, what currently conveys up into that Highland bench area. And there's certainly some costs associated with that. As far as capturing the cost accurately, certainly we reevaluate that. That does incorporate into the rate study, which we do on a five-year cycle, which we're coming up on in this next year. And that will certainly be incorporated into the rate study to make sure that we are able to capture from the water user rates the funding this requires to continue to operate the water system.
I believe the court found our capacity fees to be legitimate, and it looks to me like we're having to look for water much more aggressively than we have in the past. Those are increasing costs. Finding access to property where we can perhaps put treatment, those are increasing costs. And it just looks to me like we've got to be proactive in that, taking that to our rate study.
Certainly. And that is part of the evaluations, reviewing the capacity fees in conjunction with the capital improvements plan that was developed as part of the facility plan. So we have a 20-year outlook on the major capital improvement projects that will be needed, and that is covered from the capacity fees and then also the, you know, our regular mainline replacement projects, and that is incorporated as well into that evaluation.
City of Chubbick has a large water storage facility just south of Chubbick Road off the interstate. Is there a well at that location also?
There's not. No, there's not. Most of their wells all reside in the valley floor as well. They've got one well that's located near Highline Road and a few others, but yeah, they're very similar to our operation. They boost up the hill to that tank.
Do they have a well on Highline Road?
It's... There's a small one in Bismarck.
You don't want the capacity of that well?
It's quite small. It's 350 gallons a minute. I'm not 100% certain that it's in production right now.
Are... By going out north of town and east of town beyond where we are, are we going to have some access situations because there's another municipality out there?
You know, access across the...
Freeway.
Yes, access is certainly a concern. I'm not aware of any problems that we've had with access related to being adjacent to another municipality to date.
But if you're going from the valley, and the valley is not contiguous to the city...
In terms of the distribution system?
Yeah. I mean, how do we... It looks like you'd have to put in a long system, and then you've got... Every fluid has some friction that reduces, so you don't come that. So, you know, the longer you have... The farther you have to pump it, the more intense your pumping has to be.
Certainly. You know, in conjunction with the north end development, we're working with the developers there to help them understand what the requirements will be for them in terms of what they will have to develop for that infrastructure and tying that into the planning work that we've done on our end to make sure that what they bring as their proposed development plan fits into the master plan we have for the system as a whole. And so they will have to address some of those concerns. They have indicated to us that they intend to look for water sources within that development area, and we'll have to wait and see how that plays out for them.
So we've got a few questions yet. When we see these wells that are up off the floor, you know, like up in Butte, not Alamo... Was it Alamosa?
Appaloosa.
Appaloosa. And there are increased nitrates, there's increased minerals. Why is the difference between the quality there and the valley floors? Is it simply that there's more water down there, so it gets diluted? The nitrates are moving down, but there's more water and they get diluted because aquifers flow below ground just like water on surface does, it seems like?
There's definitely a pattern to it. We really don't completely understand how the aquifer functions. We have a better understanding of the main body of the Portonup Valley aquifer, which is in the valley floor, than we do of these kind of peripheral zones. We do see these other... The minerals and things like that in the valley floor as well. There's a different composition because of where the water originates from and the rock that it's traveled through. We do have some wells where we have nitrate levels that we have to watch quite closely and other constituents as well. That's part of why we need new water supplies, because there have been instances in the past where we've had to shut wells off because of contaminant levels increasing in a production well. We need to be able to have a place to replace that supply.
Create alternatives.
Have some alternatives.
Well, and some of those nitrate levels may decrease. For instance, on the north irrigation that was tested, we had nitrates listed within that. But you've got applications such as farming operations where they're applying pesticides and other things that can increase that and fertilize, you know, other things that are being used. And so that's a different level than, say, you know, a contamination from the septic system or the... So those could stop or reduce once that farming operation stopped and as the city develops.
But there's... As we move north, if we have to move north, you're getting into less regulated residential areas where there's a transition from a septic system to a sewer system. And I would imagine you're going to encounter some... You know, there's some dense areas out there that's all on septic. It looks to me like they would put nitrate levels in a higher quantity.
Sure is true. Yeah, that could definitely be a factor.
Is there any reason to believe that a well on Pocatello Creek further downstream, closer to the red line or something further down would have different quality levels than what the test well you've already done?
In terms of quality, we would anticipate that it would be similar in terms of quality. The quantity certainly could be hugely variable from what we found in this location. We... When that area was part of City of Alameda, there were some wells in that general area that have since been abandoned. We don't have great records on why they were abandoned. That happened long before City of Pocatello incorporated in City of Alameda, but they... There were some wells in that general area.
Abandoned and plugged or just abandoned?
We believe they were plugged, but like I said, we don't have great records on them.
Are there any potential locations?
There are, and we're looking to try to find some new options. In conjunction with Murray Smith's evaluation, we're trying to identify a couple of other locations, whether we would like to pursue redevelopment on existing wells that could be brought back into production with some redevelopment or other sites that seem like they may be a good option to explore and do another test well and see if they would be a viable location.
Just to reiterate for Mr. Seibert's benefit, we are going to abandon the well and plug it, right?
We are.
Okay.
And you said that wasn't the primary cause of the problem about what was?
That is the conclusion. The conclusion from Clearwater Geoscience is that they did not believe that the amount of flow to be measured was sufficient to cause the amount of water level decrease that's been observed by Mr. Seibert on its own. He really did not have sufficient information to conjecture what other causes could be at play. There's a lot of factors that could influence the groundwater level, including recharge.
But any corollary between our well and his well will be remediated by plugging this.
Correct.
Skyler and Jeff, if we were to have no other sources of water, how much additional capacity or number of homes could be added to our community without adding additional wells? Do you have information like that?
We do. I would have to dig into it to give you an exact number.
But we have capacity.
We do have capacity right now. We do have... Currently, there are a couple of specific zones within the system that, within the 2016 facility planning study, were identified as having projected needs within that 20-year planning window. However, we're in pretty good shape where we sit right now with what we anticipate for development within our current area of impact. Obviously, that area of impact is beginning to adjust itself, and we will continue to adjust those planning expectations. But we are in a pretty good spot as far as to our total water supply that we have right now. In addition to that, we're continuing to see some decreases in the total water use just from water conservation efforts that we've made and a general trend of reduced water use overall. It's hard to say whether that continues for 20 years in the future or not, but...
Another place, though, you said that there was a 565 gallon a minute deficiency based on a 20-year plan.
Correct.
What I'm hearing or seeing through that is that we've got to learn how to move more of our water within the system.
Well, and that deficiency is based on the current supply to the Highland bench area, so that's with our existing booster in place. And so we're looking to provide that redundancy that's needed with an additional supply that produces water up to that bench area, be it a well or be it a booster pulling water from the valley floor. Ideally, you know, the concept was to, if we could site a well adjacent to our existing transmission line, use the infra... transmission line, use the infrastructure that was in place. That would have the lowest cost for users and impact to our operation. Unfortunately, you know, that well site was not meeting some of the quality and quantity parameters that we had identified. When we set out on this venture, we were targeting a well capacity of about 2,200 gallons per minute so that we could provide the redundancy needed and meet the future demand.
Shift a little bit. We're talking northeast part of the city. Southwest part of the city, I understand, in the Johnny Creek area, we have some water pressure issues. There's some people just told me that we've painted some of our fire hydrants to indicate that we don't have adequate pressure to fight a big fire there. Is that true?
We have changed... We've made some modifications to pressure in the Johnny Creek area. The painting of the fire hydrants doesn't indicate inadequate water. It indicates that it is a area of the system that operates after a pressure regulator station, and that indicates to the fire department that they need to use extra caution in operating the fire hydrants so that we don't cause issues with those pressure regulators.
Yeah, the city was issued an order, a consent order, by Department of Environmental Quality to meet the operating conditions of supplying pressures between a range of 40 to 100 PSI. We had pressures that actually exceeded that. So, we had to reduce those pressures in certain zones to come into compliance with that order and supply that.
So, was our system... I'm not real versed on this, but it would seem like if you have higher pressures, it's because maybe you don't have as big a lines, and so you're trying to send more through faster. And so, how are we looking at our system out there? Is that going to have to be developed someday to have greater carrying capacity with lower pressure?
No. So, actually, we're finalizing the final phases of that pressure improvement. We actually had too much pressure. And it was a system that was inherited, you know, once that Johnny Creek area was annexed in from the county system. So, we were dealt with some operational conditions that were outside of the current regulations today. And so, we're having to conform to those standards and bring those in line. It wasn't an overpressuring as far as, you know, overcoming some inadequate line sizes. It was actually because the current transmission line operated both in the condition of transmission and supply. And so, there was no way to regulate that until we improved that and ran a transmission line that could be regulated separately from the distribution line.
I've had a real education today. I hope others have felt the same way. Are there other comments that you feel are important for us to have at this time?
We just appreciate your support and, you know, this effort, and as we move forward with trying to find water and trying to provide an adequate source to our community. We appreciate your support in this.
Well, it's good to have experts. Roger and I were talking about some of the vocabulary in this report that was given to us. It's new to us. And so, we appreciate your excellent presentation. The clearness has been very, very helpful. And our challenges are still ahead of us, it looks like, but I think we're going to be able to meet the needs, and that's very helpful. Other comments? Heidi?
I just had a quick mention that we do have Mr. Seibert here, and do you have any questions? Or I assume that you've been in communication with them, and you're happy with the direction we're going, and I just wanted to make sure while you were here that there were no additional questions.
I'd like to just make a few comments and talk about it.
We would be happy to receive your comments, Mike. Let's just pull a chair right up here.
Mike Seibert, the Outback Golf Park. And first I'd like to say is everything in my wells was working fine when it closed down at the end of the year in October 2017. When I fired them up in April, there was evidently an issue. And I went through the assumption that the test well wasn't impacting it. So, I went through all my piping systems, pressure tested everything, make sure there's not any leaks. I pulled my riser pipes, my motors out, checked them out. I had one riser pipe that had a leak in it in the bit large well. I replaced the riser pipes, put them back down. And through all the testing and the volume estimation between last fall to when I started up this fall, I lost about 35 gallons a minute charge rate in my well. And that's enough to throw the well pumping system off, or they suck down to the pumping motors and cause all the issues. It was just 35 gallons a minute. And so, since everything is working right in my system, and my static water column has dropped, there had to have been something drawing that away. And it's either drought from continuous year, but it wasn't because last year I measured the water columns and we pulled the pipes. You could see the wet on the pipe, and it's two and a half pipes down is where the static water level is when we pulled the pipes out. So, through all my testing, it was about 35 gallons a minute. And I went through and any heads that were seeping, I replaced them to make sure to try to get that back up. And really, we don't know. That aquifer is not mapped. We don't know the relationship between higher level and lower level zones of water, and where they're flowing together and what they're causing. But it was just a coincidence that... My conclusion was it had to be flowing down the well casing on the test. We weren't sure how much, but according to the hydrologist, it came out 30 gallons a minute was flowing down. Well, that's pretty close to my estimations, which caused the problem. Well, that small amount of production in an aquifer that's maybe up on a perch or something, and I don't know where the water's coming. It's coming down the valley, probably coming down Highland Ridge, Ridgewood, and there it's been flowing in. And my concern, even if you... Well, no, after he plugs this off, my charge rate comes back by spring. And if it comes back, we know for sure that's it. But my main concern is if you go down and put a production well in and start pulling 1,500 gallons a minute underneath my water source, my water's going to go away. 30 gallons a minute causes an issue. What's going to... 1,500 gallons going to do? So, the hydrologist's conclusion that it's not the primary cause, well, it's based on all kinds of assumptions, like width of the aquifer, volume, time it takes for 30 gallons a minute to draw an aquifer down. Well, you have to make those assumptions, you'd have to have the aquifer mapped to actually do it. But all I know is you put the well casing down there, 30 gallons a minute, went, dropped down to the 600-foot level, and my water dropped one way, and my charge rate. It's primarily the charge rate, because what I'm doing is my pumps are pumping excess now in excess of the charge rate of the well, because it's all going and flowing down the pipe. Now, if they get it plugged and it comes back, well, we're all fine and happy, and everything goes on. But if you come in and put a production well down there, I'm going to be forced to do the water column. And my wells has got the oldest water rights in the whole valley going up there except for two wells. One's Carolway, and one Anderson's got one. So, all the new homes constructed out there, everybody up Ridgewood, Sunset, up the valley, won't be able to airgate again. Anyway, that's where I'm at.
But I think, Mike, we said we're going to abandon that well.
But also, he said he's doing a study to look at developing into production well. Is that true?
We are doing a economic analysis of whether that would make any sense. In order to construct a production well, we certainly would have to resolve the question of the interrelation between the upper level of the aquifer and the lower levels. We would need to verify that installing a production well at that location would not, as Mike said, completely drive it.
You probably wouldn't perforate it until you got down to the level.
Correct. And, you know, the test well wasn't perforated until we got to 300 feet as well. However, the casing was not sealed from the ground surface down, and therefore it allowed water to travel down adjacent to the casing. And then, when we got to the perforated zone, entered into the well.
Anyway, it's an issue, and we'll see after it's plugged what happens. And if there is a production well developed, we really don't know how those water levels are tied in and where they're tied at. You might be sucking water out of this lower aquifer, but it's actually connected two miles upstream. And the higher one could be dropping down. And I think Water Resources Department, when you do a well like that, they'll make you put test equipment in the surrounding wells, bring your production line well online, and test the water levels of the surrounding wells to make sure it don't impact it. And they do that all over the place, especially when you have multiple levels of higher capacity But mine's working on a very small amount of water compared to the requirements the city has.
Well, thank you very much. We'll turn the conducting of the meeting back to Mayor Blatt.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number five, is Portnoy Valley Community Access Presentation. Representatives from Portnoy Valley Community Access, PBCA, will give a presentation regarding their desire to take over community access responsibilities once the city's video service department is closed on September 30, 2018. PBCA is in the process of establishing a nonprofit status and will be available to answer council's questions or concerns regarding the organization and given an update on PBCA's goals for keeping the community. Good morning.
I'm Anna Reed Spencer. I am a current grad student in the MP program at ISU. I have been in finance and budgeting for the last 20 years, and the last seven years of that I have been in nonprofit work. So...
And my name is Lisa Smith. In 2015, I received a Master's of Public Administration degree from Idaho State University with a focus on nonprofit management. For the last three and a half years, I've been working with various community groups, and I provide structural support. I do grant writing to support community projects, and I work to develop and implement community improvement plans. Sorry, we're a bit nervous to be up here in front of you guys, so please bear with us.
But you can tell we're really sweet people.
No, ask why. And extremely knowledgeable. I was blown away by how much you guys know about water issues. So, but the reason that Anna and I wanted to express to you our experience is so that you will keep that in mind as we talk to you about this exciting opportunity. So, as you already know, on October 1st, community access is no longer going to be funded, and Pocatello residents will lose access to local programming, information, and a true public forum. As concerned residents, we are in the process of establishing Portnoy Valley Community Access, a 501(c)(3) that will create and offer a community forum that empowers citizens to learn, create, and express ideas through multiple media outlets. And I apologize, I had a handout with our mission statement and goals, but technology was not my friend this morning. So, I did not print that out, but we will express those to you. So, as of right now, we have registered with the Secretary of State as a nonprofit. We have filed and received an EIN with the IRS disclosing our intent to file for nonprofit status. And we are currently in the process of filling out the 1023 form and requesting that the approval of our nonprofit status be backdated to August 20th of this year, which was when we filed for our EIN. We do anticipate having the 1023 completed and mailed out by the end of this month, and we currently expect that our 501(c)(3) establishment process to be completed between four weeks and three months from the submission date, depending on how long that red tape takes. Portnoy... Pardon me. Portnoy Valley Community Access's goals are to bring community activities and information into people's homes and mobile devices, provide a voice to citizens, a means for them to express and educate themselves, provide a resource to connect local institutions with residents in the community that can benefit from their services, promote local arts and cultural activities and individuals, provide content that promotes the health and wellness of our residents, and bring awareness of PBCA and the opportunities it provides to the community. We will accomplish them by creating video content, spotlighting local arts, documentaries about various aspects of Pocatello, citizen bios, and local short film festivals to start. We have a lot of ideas about where this can go as it takes off, but within the first year, we do have some specific goals that we expect to achieve. First of all, we would like to ensure that popular programming continues. We know that the Fit and Ballproof Course is a resource to a lot of elderly residents in the community, and we would like to continue that. We expect to achieve our 501(c)(3) status so that we can apply for grants to cover operational funds and the creation of new content. We expect to expand Portnoy Valley Community Access to have a strong online presence, a website, YouTube, and various other types of media expression. We want to move it kind of forward so that it can reach people in this new era, the way that they receive media. We also want to create more visibility for community events and local nonprofits. Both of us work with a lot of different nonprofit organizations, and we all joke about we're all the best kept secret of Pocatello. You know, it's really hard for residents to know what kind of services are provided. And so, that is a role that we expect that Portnoy Valley Community Access could fill. And then finally, we would also like to create awareness of Portnoy Valley Community Access among residents as a source of information and also a platform for them to have their voices heard. How PBCA can assume community access responsibilities, this is kind of our plan for the transition. We are currently looking at space, talking to KPVI currently to see about accessing some of their space. We haven't gotten to a final idea yet or a number, but we are looking for a place to get ADA access and that we allow for a filming studio. So, that makes KPVI more of a current... What is that? Focus? Current focus?
It's a desirable location. It varies in the amenities that come with it.
Exactly. We are also talking to other community residents who have places for rent right now, but we're kind of putting them on the back burner because KPVI does offer a lot more to us for that specific purpose. We would also... We could use the city's extra equipment from this transition and from the cutback and consolidation of all of your departments and what's going on with this, cutting of this line item from your budget. May I approach and hand out?
Absolutely.
So, this is a budget of our forecasted expenses for the first year of operations. You'll notice that, you know, some of it are... They are projections, some of them are ranges, because in this short time period, it has been hard to nail down specific numbers. And what you are currently looking at is an idea for someone to be on staff with payroll for editing, filming, being able to be out in the public as needed, and to carry out some of the things that the board cannot... some of the things that the board cannot carry out in our everyday function. We're looking at the typical insurances that will be required for maintaining business operations, workers' comp for the employee, as well as insurance for the business that would cover any kind of equipment that we have or get, or any kind of personal injury for the staff employee who, which would be unrelated with workers' comp. We're currently estimating at $1,000 per month for rent. Again, we still haven't finalized the amount that KPVI is going to be able to offer the space to us for. Depending on if KPVI actually gives us, if we come to an agreement with KPVI, the water and electricity may vary substantially, because that may be included. We are not entirely sure as we are still in negotiations. And then we will also need access to internet, so we can upload and update. Incidents would be covering any kind of software programs that would be lost in the transition between here and the nonprofit. Office supplies would be anything else that would be paper or incidentals that we need to use or consume during the transition to get our name out for printed materials and letting the community know what we are doing. We will also need a computer for the editing uploading if it turns out that we are not able to, if in the consolidation, an editing computer is not available. And of course, the printer and scanner for typical office work. And again, this is, this is very much an approximation. This doesn't cover everything. This really just covers most of the basics, because we haven't nailed down a lot of the specific shit. We are planning to work with John, who has the technical knowledge and work experience to do the work with the community access. He knows everything that's been going on between community access and how it's, how things work logistically between getting programs up and running or continue the work, so we don't have to worry about a lull in the transition, because we don't know how to do it ourselves. We view John currently as a good resource for that. And we look forward to working with other members of our community. Sorry, I lost my place. We are also looking forward to working with other community members who also have their degree in media services, who are also interested in creating more programming and content for the city.
And so after the first year, after we do have a strong 501(c)(3) established, we do have plans for sustainability. Sorry, I don't know, lost my place too. So yeah, once established, Portnoy Valley Community Access would be able to apply for grant funding to help cover operational costs, as well as the creation of new content that could be based on specific topics of interest such as physical exercise, nutrition, or those types of things. We would also look for community sponsorships. We would provide DVD sales or, and/or charge for filming activities, which is something that was currently done at dance recitals and other locations. And again, this wouldn't be to make a profit, it would just be to cover the cost of providing that service to that organization. And then we would also do some community fundraising.
Now comes the hard part. To achieve just the basics for the transition right now, we need funds. We are not set up 100% to do all the grant writing and the fundraising and everything else, as we are waiting for our 501(c)(3) status to come through. And without those funds, we cannot, and we cannot continue to have community access available to the community. We need to make sure that we can facilitate this in a very seamless manner, so that we are off air as little time as possible, so that the community doesn't forget, or they think that everything is gone, that we can give them that outlet, that we're not gone, we are here, and we are going to expand, and we're concerned about the community for your voice. So with that, we have, it has been reported that $170,000 will be saved from cutting this from the line item budget of the city of Pocatello. With the budget that I have come up with, and yes, even understanding that it can be adjusted depending, it will vary as certain things start to come through, we are looking at about $50,000 to keep this going from October 1 of 2018 to September 30 of 2019. Even though expecting to start making, having the ability to write for grants and funding and doing donations and fundraising, we're looking at that's not even a possibility until at least January, when our nonprofit comes through. That's the estimation. It could be like in four weeks, we could by the end of October be doing all the fundraising. But by three months, if it doesn't make it that four weeks, we're operating without any funds whatsoever that could help with making this to be a service for our community.
So in addition to the amount of funds that we are asking to transfer responsibility and control of community access over to Portnoy Valley Community Access, we are also asking that in your consolidation, if you have extra equipment that you're no longer going to be using, that you would donate that to us. That would save us the time and energy of trying to secure equipment, would allow us to instead, would allow us instead to focus on establishing a strong nonprofit with strong community support. And we're available to answering, yes.
Counsel, any questions you might have?
I have a question, maybe not for them, but probably our legal department. What is the process we have to go through on our equipment before doing anything different
So we would, Jared Johnson, City Attorney. We would treat it as surplus equipment, once the department is no longer able or has a need for that equipment, and we would go through the process like we do in the other surplus city property. And then the council could decide how to dispose of that property. If decided to do the donation, then we could make that a council decision and do that.
Mr. Mayor, I guess my response would be, you're two brave ladies. We're glad you made this presentation to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
It is good. It just came to my attention, Counsel, and I don't know if anybody else has looked at their box yet, but there's another group apparently that is also looking at this. They sent a letter September 6, 2018. I don't know if you were aware of another group by chance?
We did receive that, yeah.
And so I don't know if there's interest in hearing from another group or helping and moving forward here with this. We kind of, I know when we were talking about this, that these two wonderful ladies stepped up and said, "We want to do this," and that was months ago when they started the process moving forward. And so I don't know if there's interest in that or not, but I just want to make sure that that's, that you're aware of that. If you had seen that, then.
We would also love to be connected with that other group, because we know that it takes a lot of people to make things like this happen, so we...
And we can even work together.
Yeah, we would love to collaborate with other people who are interested and passionate in making this happen.
Let's say we give them the information on this other group and see if they can start a dialogue. I think I saw in there that this group's already got a 501(c)(3) status.
That's awesome.
Looks like they have one, so. I can get a copy, why don't we get a copy of this made for you, and you could definitely reach out to them and visit with them. As for me, Counsel, I think this is a good option for us to be able to see community access continue on, and I think it's a cost savings too, so. I personally think it'd be in support of doing whatever we can to help them.
Yeah, I really appreciate you stepping up and trying to fill this need, and I think, yes, whatever we can do to help make this happen as seamlessly as possible. And if that includes working with this other group, we didn't know about them, but...
I know, we've been pretty focused on your group, and you're getting a 501(c)(3), and so this was...
This might help you guys get kickstarted while working with them, and then by the time you get yours.
Let's see if we can't get a copy of this for you.
Their council should have free rent.
Oh, I would like to know where they're getting that from.
Yeah. Well, that's how it's done, right? A lot of people can bring different resources and stuff. And collaborating on grant writing and whatnot is also a very, very effective tool. So this is actually kind of exciting.
And so, thank you. Counsel, what would you like to do with this? What kind of direction would you?
I think we should put it on the table at the present time until we get everything put together and get...
Get them in touch with this other group, and then go from there, get a report in the near future.
We ought to be doing an assessment of what will become, may become available as surplus equipment.
And we've started, we have started that assessment, and there's quite a bit of equipment that is available.
And Mr. Mayor, we did say when we were talking about that in our budget process, that we would hold that equipment and not auction it or surplus it, so that's...
That was my understanding of this, is council's desire was to not surplus this this next May in our regular case, it took longer to get the 501(c)(3) for these folks, and to hold it for even a year longer than May to give them the opportunity to do so, so I don't...
We said that we had a place where we could store that, or? Yeah, okay.
So, it sounds like they're moving faster than that, and we probably will be able to do something with the equipment before May.
That's our anticipation.
That's our anticipation. We were even talking about another nonprofit organization was going to be able to house the equipment if needed to get offsite, so, yeah, we've been, we've been moving.
Been moving, absolutely, yeah.
We appreciate that.
Sounds great.
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. We will kind of wait and wait for an update.
Absolutely.
And then we'll go from there.
Thank you.
I'll probably talk to John. Are you talking to John and working with John? I'll visit with John and find out where everything is, so I can make a report to the council, and we can go from there.
Perfect. Thank you, Sealy.
Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number six, Status of Greyhound Bus Depot. Planning Development Service staff and representatives from Old Town Pocatello Inc. will be present to discuss the status of the Greyhound Bus Depot.
Good morning, Mayor and Counsel. I'm Terry New, Assistant Planner, Stephanie Palagi with Old Town Pocatello, and Randy Dixon, who's involved in every community in the city. Super volunteer. That's right.
Okay, I have a handout. Maybe we should do this first. Do you mind if I?
Please. So if this handed to me, I can get it going both directions.
Get your readers out.
Get the readers out.
Readers.
Just want to hand them to Ruth.
Hey, thank you for your time today. Several years ago, the Pocatello Regional Transit Department moved from the Greyhound Bus Depot downtown to their new location on Fifth. That left that building unoccupied, and when PRT moved, it basically cleaned out the stuff, locked the door, turned off the power and the water, and vacated a historic building located in the heart of Old Town Pocatello. For the past several years, we've been discussing with various community groups, we've had Myers-Anderson Architects take a look at the building. We've walked through, we've cleaned up. Terry's been coordinating with the Historic Preservation Commission and PRT to make sure that the building has stayed secure. Had to replace a couple of windows, make sure that the building is secure. We also, in the meantime, had renovated the historic Greyhound sign that hangs on the building and continues to run, thanks to our Relight the Night Committee and the City of Pocatello. And we're to the point now where we have an interested entity that would like to lease the building. They have submitted a sublease application with Union Pacific Railroad, and that brings up the issue with the building that we need to make sure that everyone is aware of. That building is a city-owned building, sitting on railroad land. So it's a unique situation, wherein the city has a lease with the railroad for the use of the land, and then the city leases to a tenant to occupy the building. Our lease with the railroad, the city's lease with the railroad is being renegotiated now. What we would like to do is make sure that we, as a committee of Old Town, the City of Pocatello, our Relight the Night Committee, we have representatives from PRT, from the city council that are sitting on this committee, and we have the support from the mayor and the city council to proceed with getting this building reoccupied and working together as a community to do grant writing and fundraising to facilitate the renovation and rehabilitation of the building itself. We were a little hesitant in the fact that spending a lot of time and effort on a building that we are passionate about, and passionate about saving, and passionate about having an occupant in the building again, we wanted to make sure that we have the support to make the project work before we spend a lot of time, effort, and fundraising capacity to make that happen. So the building is in really pretty good shape. The city had taken good care of the building, not fantastic care of the building, but good care of the building. The building, the windows need to be replaced, there's some tile that needs to be replaced. There's a moderate amount of work that needs to be done to make the building inhabitable for a new tenant. We have talked with the city, the mayor's office, about having a police substation located in Old Town once again. That substation was actually located in that building for a number of years. So there are multiuses for that building. We just want to know how you feel, how you would direct us to proceed with working to continue the work on the leases, the renovation, and the fundraising for the building itself.
I might add that the building has and still will be a bus stop and part of the PRT system, which is a very important aspect for Old Town.
So it's a turn right now for PRT. So they still continue to use the platform for shelter. However, they don't have access to the restrooms. So by renovating the building and getting a tenant in there again, it would enhance services available for writers of PRT.
And I hesitate to, it would be a broken record, but the importance of that neon sign is that you can't put a value on it. You know, it's, that is not a cookie cutter building. It was designed by Frank Paradise with a curved facade, and the sign was built specifically for that location, although there are other signs similar to it. There's nothing like it in the United States, and we just can't let it go. Might also add that Relight the Night has invested, Stephanie and I talked yesterday, and I think we've invested just over $3,000 in getting the sign running, putting a digital timer on it for maximum efficiency, and we can't let that sign go. And that's where I'm coming from with Relight the Night.
I'm very much in favor of putting somebody in there. It's sad to see a building like that unoccupied, and so I would lend my support to seeing what can be done, what should be done to preserve.
Same with me. Is there something specifically that you're, just generally you're wanting us to say we're in support, or is there something in specific?
Yeah, we're gonna, we'll have to package some funding opportunities and some, there's maybe some facade improvement money that would be available through the facade fund through the City of Pocatello. There is access to grant funding available through the Federal Transportation Administration. Skylar with PRT is willing to help with, from that perspective. There's a match involved, and we will need to fundraise the match. So we will have to package the project, and the tenant that wants to move into the building will have, they have some fundraising arms in the... building will have, they have some fundraising arms in the community as well. We just wanted to make sure that, that we have the support because it is a city-owned building. And so, we're willing as a, a community group to do the work and tap into the funding and the renovation and the architectural services and everything that we need to do to make this project happen. Again, we just want to make sure that we have the support from the city council to proceed with renovating and procuring a tenant in a city-owned building.
I have a quick question. Are you at the liberty to disclose who the potential tenant might be, or what kind of business it may be?
I believe so. I don't think there would be any issue. It's a Pocatello Arts Center.
Okay.
So, they would either expand into that building and use it as exhibit space, classroom space, event space, and, and keep their current location or move their entire location. They're, they're not quite sure exactly what their plan would be. They've had a very good summer as far as workshops and attendance, and they have, they have a, a very nice business, art business and art workshop that they, workshops that they're doing in our community.
And they're happy with the sign, because I don't want the sign to go either.
Yes. In fact, they've talked about creating kind of in an Art Deco style, a sign for the Arts Center to be located at that, at that location. So, that is a, an enhancement to our neon sign project that we have underway with Relight the Night.
Good. Thank you.
And you know that I'm in full support of this. I'm an architectural historian, and I think this building is a gem in Pocatello, and we need to do everything we can to save it. So, I definitely am very excited about seeing a tenant in the building. One thing I just wanted to mention too, you said, Randy, that it would stay a, a bus station, and I believe that was a condition to, to, to getting any FTA funding that's, that's actually required, so...
As transportation, it must be a transportation.
Okay. So, it's good that we maintain that function as well. And I think having a couple of different functions in the building really gives it, just enhances the viability of, of the project overall, so I think this is really exciting. It's an important part of Old Town, and we'll just add to, and now everything that's going on across the street from this building, I think it will really bring that area to life.
Great. I know, I'm super excited.
It looks to me like for sure three are, are supportive, and you know I'm supportive, and I'm pretty confident the other three are pretty supportive of this as well, so...
Do I have a motion in a roll call? It's time yet, so...
Sure. I would entertain a motion of some sort.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we lend our support as the city council to the advancement of this project to get a tenant into the building.
Second.
So, so, we've got, Linda seconded already before we finished the motion. She was pretty eager to get that seconded out, so that was good. So, we have a motion by President Johnston and a second by Lurick. Ruth, that's her name, Ruth, could you please call her over? I'm used to Connie, could you call her over? It's Ruth now.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Gina?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Super. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on to agenda item number seven, is proposed background check process for city employees. Human Resources, Legal Department, and Parks Department staff will present information to council regarding background checks for potential employees and volunteers of various city of Pocatello departments. Staff is seeking council's guidance regarding their preferred scope of background checks for individuals.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The preferred scope is one that doesn't be a city problem.
All right. Well, Mayor, Council, I'm Lynette Sampson, HR Consultant, and I have with me Kirk Bybee, City Risk Manager, and we are here to talk to you about background checks. We went in front of you in April talking about improving our background check process for our Parks volunteers, and at that time we were asked to bring additional information, and so that's what we're doing. So, we'll just start here. So, we've done some research, and what we're looking for is, we do have a vendor in mind, and we're currently, our legal department is working with the vendor's legal department on an agreement. We're looking to find information on applicants, probably final applicants, finalists for the positions, and we'll do an address tree, address history trace, county level search, criminal record database, sex offender registry search, the security watch list, and we'll do an AKA search. This is really important for people who have name changes, maiden changes, maiden name changes or anything. Without identifying a vendor, we can talk about who the vendor we want is, but this is what we will get regardless of the vendor we do end up going with. So, this process for the background checks that HR would like to implement, once we have gone through the background check for the interview process and we have an identified candidate, it would make a conditional offer of employment. Right now, we just do a letter of, an offer through a letter. This would add the condition that you have to pass a background check before you start employment and before the offer is finalized. In the conditional employment, it will have a paragraph, I think it would be number nine, that says you must follow this link to begin your background check process, and in that, the vendor takes care of it. The link takes them directly to their secure website, they'll have their notification of what the background check process does, and including that depending on the results, you could be dismissed or deemed unhireable. They have to authorize a background check, and then the applicant themselves goes through, enters their information, and our vendor takes care of everything from there, including the adverse notification letters in case something does come back. They would work with the applicant to discuss any issues that were flagged, and they would take care of that process. As the HR recruitment person, I would also receive notification that there was an issue that's being worked out.
Is this for all employees or just Parks?
That's why we're here. We're looking for direction from you guys on how extensive we'd like this to be. So, as I said, the volunteer or employee would get the email and enter the information. The vendor would complete the background check. So, some counties don't have all the records online, so for the areas that do not have that, they have court runners that will go and check information. And then if there is an issue that comes up, legal, HR, and the hiring manager will discuss on a case-by-case basis the incident and the, whether the offer should go forward or be denied. And then we do have legal considerations. The EOC has all sorts of laws and regulations about this. We have gone through them, we're familiar with them, so if you have any questions, we can answer those. These are additional legal considerations, but they are handled by the vendor. So, what we're here for is guidance from the council. Do you want this limited to vulnerable populations such as library and parks, or do you want it for all new city hires or people taking promotions? That was short, but...
Do you think we have a problem of non-identification of problem personnel?
I don't think so. Not right now, but it is, we do need to improve our background check process for people working with vulnerable populations. I do know that Transit Police and Fire, they already go through background checks that are required. Fire and Transit go through the state for those, Police, they do their own in-house. But it's always a good idea to be making sure we're doing our due diligence for people working with children.
So, what is the recommendation from your department then? Is it just to do it only for vulnerable populations, or...
Yes.
Okay.
We'd recommend it for those working with vulnerable populations outside of elderly people.
I think it should be everybody, animal shelter, everybody.
What is the prob, I'll ask attorney, what's the probability that if we're checking one population and we have a problem and one we haven't checked, that it increases our liability? You know, in other words, we, we, we check the people that work at the library, but like, we don't check the animal shelter and they go out and we have a occurrence with somebody. Is there, is there increased exposure when you haven't been a blanket policy?
Yeah, probably the short answer to that would be yes, but it's, it's just a part of the equation, you know?
It's a contributor.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, I, I would equate this to, you know, every dog deserves one bite, but after the, after the dog bites, the owner is then obligated to recognize that this is a biter and take care of the issue. And the same with us, you know? If we know that we've got a problem, then we need to address it. If we don't know we have a problem, we take, in your scenario, you take action in other departments, but you don't take action in this particular department, yeah, it's an argument that can be made, but still, if we don't know, then we don't know that there's a problem until after the problem occurs, and then we gotta take action at that stage.
I, I read about an incident, and it was somebody you'd never even think could be exposed to kids, and it was a public entity, and yet it happened.
Oh, it can happen.
So, I'd go with Rick. I just, anybody, any new hires...
New hires.
What will be the effect of that, if we do that?
The cost for the AKA search, $16.95 a person. We did budget $10,000 for FY19 in the HR budget for background checks.
Will that cover all new hires or just the portion?
589. We hired in, so far this year, we hired 72 full-time people. We do seasonal, we can range from 100 to 200 people that come on seasonally, and then we have our part-time that I think were about 40, 45 this year.
Forty, or 45 this year. We hired more part-time seasonal than that did we in Parks and stuff, so we're talking about all of those as well.
Yes.
How many do we typically annually hire, part-time and seasonal?
Seasonally, we hire between 100 and 200 every season, just for seasonal. And part-time, we do about 40 to 50.
Okay.
And every time the seasonal ones come back, do we, do they have to redo the background check?
That's something we would need to decide on how we do that.
If the same person comes back?
Because we do have a lot of people who return every season.
Or could there be some timeframe, like maybe not every year, but re-upping their check every five years or something like that, or three years, or is that a possibility?
Kirk's thinking real hard about that.
I'm not really. I always look like this. Yeah, it goes back to Council and Bray's issue again. It's, it's, it's part and parcel of the same thing. Once you have a policy in effect, how often do you need to review this? And frankly, you know, if the governing body, you folks, give an instruction that, well, we'll only need to check up on seasonal employees on their fifth year or third year, alternate years or something like that, that gives me a defense, because that's what the policyholders have, decision-makers have decided. It gives us some, gives us a defense when, when the policy is made at this level as opposed to Lynette making the policy. Although she does a great job, and she would do a good policy.
I would say every three years a minimum.
You know, I under, I understand the reluctance of doing it annually, simply because this is, this is an expense where we're addressing a problem that really doesn't exist yet. I mean, we're trying to avoid having the problem in the future.
It's pretty cheap to avoid the problem, make it not happen, rather than wait for it to happen and then pay for it.
Potentially. Is there a way to do a, a lighter background check every year, or is this, is that expense necessary to do a background check period?
Yeah, that's what this group that we want to go with, that's what they would charge every year. And it's actually a reduced rate because it's part of the National Recreation and Parks Association, and since we are a member, it's already less expensive than other...
So, there wouldn't be like a full version and then all, you know, light version that you would do on different years? Be the same thing? And we're also talking about including not just new people, but if you switch to a new position as you have there?
That would, that was brought up last time we talked about this, but what about people who take internal promotions? Could we then implement it for them since it's a new position?
Well, there would be, would already be on file, right?
No, because we haven't, never done it.
Oh, I knew, okay.
If it wasn't required?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, John Banks, Parks and Recreation Director, just a couple of comments on this. I, I agree with the, you know, the part, the part-time and seasonal staff maybe having a, I don't know, every other year, every third year type of situation, because technically, these people are being supervised by, you know, more senior staff, so there is some level of supervision there to begin with. However, I envision this when it pertains to volunteer coaches and their assistants as a yearly check. It's just people dealing with children that are technically unsupervised by city staff, yet still in a city-sponsored activity. I just, I, I feel that a yearly screen on that is, is necessary, and that would be the lesser of the two screens, the $11.95 variety, so I think it's money well spent.
I'm okay with the yearly check on the returns of the seasonal. I just think, I think it's nice to be on the safe side. It's too much liability to take off if something happens, so...
What feedback have you received, if any, from other departments besides Parks and Rec? Have you had any pro or against?
No, we've just been talking about it mostly with the three departments here.
It's what you desire.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a personal policy here that would include annual checks of all people interacting with children. You think that's too, too broad?
Too narrow. All new employees and hires.
All new employees and hires.
And volunteers.
And volunteers in all departments.
I second.
So, we have...
Taking new positions?
Three times a year for attorney.
I apologize. Can I, I didn't intend to do this, but when you say all volunteers, are you now including all of the advisory board volunteers as well? Or are you just limiting it to Parks and Recreation volunteers?
You're making my life difficult.
No, I would love to say no and yes.
Well, and to follow up with that, what Anna's saying, we have volunteers all the time going out and doing cleanup work, for example. We, we do a lot of stuff with various volunteers. Volunteers primarily built the little whatever park that is out by the airport, for example. I mean, this, this occurred.
So, here's a question then for our attorney. If you were to make a, we have actually a motion and a second on the table, but if you were to make a...
Where this is a sketch.
Motion, how would it sound to do this right?
If the pitch was a stretch?
It would be in uninterrupted English. Sorry, being the wise guy. Let's see. I think full-time employees and volunteers who work at the library and Parks and Rec park.
John? I would agree. They, those are the folks that have, that are typically have exposure to children or the potential of, you know, the volunteer that comes out and maybe is help cleaning the portna for, you know, in kind of a group situation, the exposure risk is just so much less. I'm not sure.
How about just if we do a recreation and all volunteers working with you? Because Sister Cities is an example, where we're sending somebody to Japan with somebody, we'd like to know, you know, just a few little things like that. we'd like to know, you know, just a few little things like that.
But you also included library.
And library.
Yeah, that's a good point. That's a real good point. And maybe even the animal shelter, too. That's another place where I am.
And there's volunteers up there?
Right. I'm drawing a volunteer.
All volunteers working with youth.
Yeah. Okay, the guy driving the lawnmower in the park.
Yeah.
That person's gonna be, have a background check.
Yes.
And again, are we including people taking new positions or not? That wasn't mentioned in the motion.
I left a lot out.
Do you want to withdraw your motion?
I'd withdraw my second.
We gotta withdraw the second. So I want some clarification, though. All people working with youth is still pretty broad when you have a river cleanup, for example, and we have youth coming there that's working directly with, is people that are volunteering in the city, and you have youth and adults, are we talking about a background check on everybody that wants to come and do a river cleanup?
I don't think so. I don't think that's necessary.
I'm talking about where they have out-of-town experiences or something like that with some of the.
I'm thinking it's people that are going through the city somehow.
Is it easier to go back to mentioning specific departments? Because I agree, anyone working with youth opens it up to so many.
My concern is, we know what we're talking about right now, but give us fifteen years and a new council and a new mayor and everything up here, and then our staff coming to them and saying, well, we can't do this project because there may be a youth there, and we have to have a background check on fifteen hundred people because that's what we have. So I don't, I know what we're trying to do, but how do you frame it so that it's very obvious to the next people?
To the future. Should we just define the specific?
Mayor, could you say volunteers that will, I guess through the course of their volunteer duties, have unsupervised interaction with youth? And then round it down that way, so your volunteer coaches, the guy on the mower that a kid walks up to, you know, I would think a river cleanup project, there would be so many people and a designated supervisor that that wouldn't fall under that category, whereas a sister city on a private trip maybe would. So you leave it kind of at the discretion of staff, but, you know, anybody who has the potential for unsupervised exposure to youth on a volunteer basis.
I think Steph has an idea of what we want to do. I think we ought to have him come back to another meeting and bring us some direction, think about this a little more, and look at the various city departments and try to define exactly where we're trying to go with this.
Put that on Lynette to give us a.
With the assistance of everybody else at that table.
I don't have any problem, because I think this is a big enough deal.
I do, too.
That we've got to do it right, and I certainly want to make sure there's no misunderstanding I will withdraw my motion, and.
Go ahead. Go ahead, no, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna simply say, I'll withdraw that motion and put in a new one, that we instruct HR to draw up a specific proposal that we can consider at another.
Based on our input.
Based on this input at another meeting.
That I'll second.
Be very, draw lines of what we're gonna do and what we're not gonna do.
Correct, yeah, yeah. Because we don't want to eliminate volunteerism over something, but we want to protect our people. We want to stay out of all lawsuits possible. So at this time, what we're doing is, is we're, you're directing these background checks to be done on all new hires, regardless of position. The next issue then is trying to figure out where the line should be drawn with the multitude. I mean, really, it's a multitude of volunteers that we have.
Sure.
And we may just need to reach out to the various departments, because I may not be aware of all the volunteers that we use for that.
I think that you have a pretty good idea right now, when you start talking parks, library, animal shelter is another really good one. The ones that you've talked about already, I think is probably the majority of them, but you might want to just duck and see if we're missing anything that we're not. Roger brought up a really good one. We're sending an adult to Japan with a bunch of youth that wouldn't be better.
It probably should be anytime an adult has the probability of being isolated with the youth returned.
Those are the considerations.
Yeah, you know, it's the big deal, because like John brings up, on the river deal, the chances of being isolated are really remote.
Well, and also the environmental fair is another one where there's a lot of volunteers, but it's heavily supervised, and I don't think that there would be a need to background check all the people that help with the environmental fair. So there are certain, and those, I guess, that would be the same department as river cleanup, but there clearly are places where we need it and others where we don't.
So at this time, do we want to move forward with new hires and do that, and then just wait for volunteers until we come back with clear direction?
And can I ask one more time? Are we including people taking new positions or not?
So I would, I would suggest, Council, that we start doing all new hires and anyone taking new positions.
That's comfortable.
And then have you come back with volunteers and with the suggestion of what you think would be best as we move forward.
I like what John had said. I think that's very.
Just unsupervised.
Okay. Did we have a motion? Did we have to vote on it? We have a motion by President Johnston and a second by Councilman Cheetum. Ruth, could you please call the room?
So the motion is all new hires and those taking promotions, and then to wait on the volunteers.
To come and, they're gonna bring it back to us. Define the definition, yeah.
And is it promotions or new positions, if it's kind of the same?
New hires. New hires and new promotions and positions, yes.
Yeah, because we have a lot of lateral movement.
Yeah. New positions.
That's comfortable.
Okay.
Okay.
So everybody. Yes.
Cheetum?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Benon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We are now going to take a break for a few minutes just before the golf, the gen item number eight, the question. Thank you for joining us after the break. We'll move on to a gen item number eight, is golf concessions agreement, request to renegotiate financial terms. Parks and Recreation staff will be joined by Four Golf representatives to review the current status of golf operations and volume of play at the city's Highland and Riverside golf courses, and to request Council's permission to renegotiate the financial obligation terms of Four Golf for the remainder of the concession agreement term. Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor Bladen, Council members, John Banks, Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Parks Superintendent.
And you guys.
Gerald Meyer from Four Golf.
Greg Aldrich from Four Golf. Thank you for the opportunity this morning. A little bit of background, Four Golf has provided operational management and maintenance of the city's two golf courses, the Highland and Riverside, for the past eighteen seasons through a series of concession agreements, the most recent having been approved by Council in late 2015 and covering the 2016 through 20 seasons. Over that period, the concession agreements in Four Golf have made a significant, or significant contributions to the Recreation Fund for the overall benefit of the department and the city, to the tune of just over a million dollars during the past ten fiscal years and similar yearly contributions prior to that time. As a rule, municipal golf courses are not typically a large revenue generator, and this is due to the extensive course maintenance and other significant operational expenditures. And as a result, many of the courses in the surrounding municipalities and also nationwide face budget challenges, at times struggling to break even or operating at losses. Over the years, Pocatello Golf courses have been able to avoid these issues to a large degree due to well-maintained and efficiently operated courses, very careful planning and budget discipline, competitive season pass and daily play rates, and also, and most importantly, being blessed with a very loyal and returning player base who frequent the courses. Regarding the concessions agreement renewal terms for 2020, the sixteen through twenty renewal, staff-based negotiations with Four Golf on successful season pass and daily round figures for preceding seasons, as well as the need to better quantify language for maintenance standards and also specify course watering fees. The overriding goal of the negotiations being that the final terms be mutually beneficial to all involved, specifically meaning the golfing community and specifically resident, Pocatello resident golfers, the city, and Four Golf. Based on the recent history for season pass and daily round sales, and then using the traditional template for financial obligation terms and conditions, city staff and Four Golf representatives were in agreement that the renewal terms were fair and equitable. However, after many successful and mutually beneficial golf seasons, the current concessionary agreement terms are unfortunately proving to no longer be beneficial nor viable for Four Golf or for other potential concessionaires, for that matter, looking into the future. This development can be attributed to a recognized trend of decreased play nationwide, which is now negatively impacting Pocatello Golf course operations as well, beginning with the 2016 season and continuing to noticeably worsen in 2017 and year-to-date this year. As an anecdote, this trend of decreased play can also be evidenced in the golf retail market in the U.S., which during the past several years also remains challenged. For Council reference, on page three of the summary for this item, there's a, I've put together a summary of season pass sales and rounds played information, as well as Four Golf revenues generated, total revenues generated, and total fees paid to the city for the past five seasons, as well as year-to-date 2018, and that's on page three of your summary. As you can see in the figures, the golf market decreases in the number of season passes purchased, and the rounds played began to decline during the 2016 season. Wouldn't you know, as soon as the ink was dry on that renegotiation? And followed by another sharp drop in 2017 and year-to-date 2018. Unfortunately, the combination of these factors, joined with the revised and increased financial obligations for Four Golf in the renewal agreement, have unfortunately created a situation where Four Golf incurred an overall operational net loss of almost seventy-nine thousand dollars for the 2017 season. And with the trending year-to-date 2018 numbers, it's expected that similar types of losses or possibly worse will be incurred for the 2018 season. In addition, as mentioned at a previous council work session several months ago, Four Golf has also incurred expenses over the years due to repairs needed at the Riverside course as a result of ongoing water delivery challenges. At that time, staff had asked Four Golf to be very specific and quantify these incurred expenses and provide them to staff, which they have done, and these quantified expenses appear on page four of your item, and over the course of the past eighteen years, have totaled in approximately sixty-three thousand dollars of incurred repairs as a result of Due to these combined factors, staff is requesting Council permission to be able to renegotiate the financial terms and obligations of the golf concession agreement for the remaining 2019 and 2020 seasons. And if Council were to grant staff permission, anticipated areas of focus for renegotiations include base payment amounts, this would be the yearly lease payments for Highland and Riverside courses, which contribute to the Recreation Fund, utility service payments, terms and conditions, so this would be course watering and sewer costs that would go directly to those enterprise funds revenues, and also look at percentage of gross revenue remittance terms and conditions. And my plan, if granted permission, is to work closely with Joyce Stroshine in kind of ferreting out and doing a deep dive into all of these areas and coming up with some good recommendations. Based on market trends, staff envisions a more dynamic agreement where financial obligations are no longer fixed, but rather are adaptable based on kind of a what the market will bear type of philosophy. I think this would serve us well in the long term in preserving service provision standards for the golfing community, as well as maintaining fair and equitable financial arrangements that are mutually beneficial for the city and Four Golf. It's also requested that Council consider possible relief measures for Four Golf for the 2018 season to help preserve their ability to operate and continue provision of their superior golf services for the community in the future, including potential forgiveness of a portion of base rent payment amounts, potential credit for some portion of expenses incurred due to water delivery issues, and lastly, potential forgiveness of a portion of utility service payment amounts due for 2018. With that, not the prettiest of pictures, but I feel that Four Golf and the city have enjoyed a long and very mutually beneficial relationship. I think the golf community has been provided excellent golf services with well-maintained courses. It's, unfortunately, the market is no longer bearing the current terms and conditions, so asking for Council's permission to try to remedy that and preserve this service for the community. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that I can.
Do you have initial thoughts, is what you'd like to do, John?
I think we need to, I've got a lot of thoughts bouncing around. I think we need to somehow tie this as a combination of season pass numbers and rounds of play numbers, which kind of through osmosis drive your car rental revenues and these types of things. So some kind of combination of that, combined with total revenue generated, and maybe we come up with a percentage that lets them, you know, pay their staff and operate for providing this service. I don't think anybody's making a ton of money off of this, but also keep the city receiving their fair share as far as rental fees and utility fees, but something that's a little more dynamic and based on what the market will bear percentage-wise, that's what I'm thinking. And I need to do a lot more thinking about it, and I would like to have Joyce doing the thinking with me, but I do have those initial thoughts. I think it needs to be not so static, but more dynamic.
Less base fee and more based on play?
Well, just kind of what the market will bear. So maybe even, maybe we even go with a total, a total revenue generated amount, and if it's, you know, go back a handful of seasons when things, you know, when they were able to pay all their staff and their bills without incurring a loss, and, okay, what was your total revenues there? Maybe that's the line in the sand. Above that, the city gets more. Below that, well, we both get a little bit less type of arrangement, instead of being static.
How will that loss in income affect your department overall?
It will hinder our ability to build fund balance to some degree. I'm hoping that, you know, like the real estate market or the stock market or anything else, that maybe this is an ebb and flow type of situation, I'm hoping, and that things will recover, in which case, I think a dynamic agreement still is effective, because if you're over a certain amount, the percentages increase. We won't have to be, in other words, I wouldn't be coming back to you every season with a request to renegotiate. It would be dynamic enough to handle all situations. But those are my initial thoughts, and I, kind of pending what Council was gonna say, I haven't dove too much deeper into it than that. I figured if you guys did provide us permission, that I've got all fall and winter. I figured if you guys did provide us permission, that I've got all fall and winter to work on, noodle on it and come back to you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm all in favor of our having fairness in what we do. It was a real mistake to go there yesterday, because I could see on that 160 acres an incredible subdivision. We've got to make this so that it's a moneymaker for everyone. Otherwise, Jim's going to be promoting real estate sales. I really think it's a good idea, because I-
Going to name Riverside Acres, Jim?
Riverside Acres. Let's not keep planting that seed, let's not fertilize that at all.
Is it time down the road to look at whether two courses, two 18-hole courses, are needed in Pocatello?
Well, I'll call that first and let Greg comment. It is a good question. I really hope that it ebbs and flows like John says, and I think that potentially it will, and certainly some of the development opportunities that are going on in the Pocatello area.
Can we get you to maybe come to the taste of the audience area at home? Thank you.
Sure. So, we think the city can support two courses in the near term is my answer. I think golf is going to ebb and flow a little bit. I think we're going to build population in this area in the next five to 10 years. So hopefully in 10 or 15 years, it might make sense to actually look at expanding golf services and potentially look at another course. That's my thoughts.
No, I would agree with that. I would hope that with the growth that the city's hopefully going to see in the future, that there's going to be demand for two courses, and hopefully with growth, it might be a need for a third golf course at some point in time.
How close to capacity are you? Obviously, not very close now.
That's a really great question, but I would guess 60%. There's a lot of weekday afternoons where it's hard to find many cars at the golf courses, and that used to be less the case.
So it kind of varies with day-to-day. Your weekdays, obviously, everybody's working, so you've got your retired folks, your season pass holders, busy till about noon, one o'clock, and then things really die off. So that's when we've tried to run different promotional items, is during that dead time, discounted rounds, and that sort of thing. But the weekends with our different fundraising tournaments, different amateur golf tournaments that guys can compete in, that will tie up one golf course, leaving the other golf course open for public play, and, you know, we see some pretty busy weekends.
How do you play distributed between the two courses?
They're pretty equal. They're actually pretty equal.
And you've talked about ebb and flow. We're at that lower point right now, but during our good points, when we're in a better situation, what is our, where are we in terms of capacity? Were we close to being at?
You know, I think we're probably closer to 80, 85% at that point, so pretty close.
It's never been to the point that the course was busy all day long, every day. You know, there was a point that weekends, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, was a point that they were pretty busy, but there was still time during certain parts of the day usually in those afternoons.
During those times, you definitely needed to have a tee time if you're going to get on the course.
Right.
It wasn't like you could walk up there and say, "I want to play," and they could just get you in. You would wait for a half hour, 45 minutes to get on, so.
During the mornings, we're pretty busy.
Are there any communities that are playing a lot of golf or aren't seeing this general downturn?
You know, I think the bigger populations, and then again, it also depends on, because there was a point in time where the golf industry really overbuilt, and so there's been a correction, and so some of those golf courses are going away. There's, I watched a news article just recently from Colorado, and there were one community that overbuilt some of these golf courses that had pass holders, had daily play, they're seeing these golf courses go away. And then, like Jim alluded to, they're turning into a development.
Right.
And that's happened in a number of communities. I mean, they're just, the golf courses, they're just not supporting themselves. The land is valuable, so they're turning it into something else.
Yeah, I don't know the exact numbers, but I read a statistic the other day that said that roughly 400 courses had closed nationwide last year, and 17 new ones have been built.
So it's just going through a correction right now. It was really real estate-driven, and so with the real estate market having its downturn, golf courses had their downturn as well.
Yeah, it's a little bit different situation. Lava or Lavas had a nine-hole course, but they were not able to sustain enough play to keep it open, so they've closed here within the last year or so. I think as far as play capacity, if you, I guess, the trick would be getting people to, you know, that worked around their work schedules, or whatever the case may be, play at the less desirable times. I would say during the hours of, I don't know, sunrise till noon or one, you're probably closer to 90% capacity.
You are.
And then it tails off in some of the less desirable hours. So they've got all kinds of promotions, and buy one, get one free or half off, that are trying to fill those unused times, but I guess during the desirable times, we've got a very high capacity, so I-
So when you say 60%, roughly, that's an average overall, but there is moments or times during the day when it would be much higher than that?
What would you guys say, seven to noon or one?
Yeah. Yeah, they're trying to beat the heat.
Did Lavas closing give us a bump at all?
No, I haven't really seen any sort of an impact. I'm good friends with the golf pro that was there, and, you know, like we've discussed in our committees and that, you've got fixed expenses, you've got to maintain the golf course, whether you have one player or you have 100 players. And unfortunately, he was just, he had all these expenses. His weekends, like, kind of like what I shared with you, his weekends weren't too bad, but then he had five weekdays, and he's out there, and you can't just go for just the weekend, you're going for seven days. So you've got expenses all through the week. And this isn't just an issue with Pocatello Golf, this is an issue with golf nationwide. And the PGA, we've got initiatives, but they're always coming out with new things, new promotional ideas of ways that we can promote golf, whether it be through kids, or ladies golf, or senior golf, and, you know, we're always experimenting with those, implementing those ideas, so, and they do work, they do work to an extent.
Because this is a national trend, are there projections nationally for, I mean, have they said anything about seeing an upturn again? I mean, did they, I mean, has PGA suggested that this would be an ebb and flow?
I haven't seen studies specifically.
Yeah, I haven't seen specific studies either, but I have seen kind of two schools of thought. Those that are in the golf industry, like the Golf Magazine's, National Golf Foundation, their projections are rosy, and I think they're rosy mainly because they're out trying to sell sponsorships for tournaments and for golf programs in general.
They have an interest in-
They have a vested interest in-
Presenting a rosy picture.
Yeah, painting a rosy picture. The other publications and organizations that I've seen do studies project that there's going to be a continued decline in golf for the near future.
I didn't tell that correction has really taken place. You know, X amount of golf courses needed to close, some of these initiatives start to kind of take hold and generates more play.
Is the issue too many golf courses or not enough players?
One, both. I think it's both. And I think the initiatives are dealing with the player aspect, the course closures are dealing with the influx of golf courses.
You know, it was odd, I came on board November 14, and I can remember pretty shortly after that, having a get-together with the Blackfoot folks and talking about how they were just, their course was just hemorrhaging money, and they couldn't, they just couldn't keep up, you know, with water bills and staff and everything else, and I, you know, you look at our figures, or the Four Golf figures for the 13, 14, 15, you know, I remember myself, boy, knock on wood, for whatever reason, we've got a good thing here, and let's keep it rolling with, you know, well-maintained courses, and we have a very loyal player base. I think, just my, I guess, novice eye not being out at the course is a whole heck of a lot, it feels like maybe some of the player base is aging out, and we're not, we haven't quite been able to find the formula to replace them with new, excited golfers, although there's a lot of exciting promotions that are being tried, so.
I've heard it said the golf needs to be Tiger Woods.
I don't know about that.
Doesn't make a big difference.
Well, and I'm a strong proponent of having amenities like this in the community, and so I really want to see it work. And I'm not, certainly not ready personally to throw in the towel, or, you know, say we only need one, or anything like that. I'd like to see us figure this out, and I do hope that we get an upturn. But I think it adds to our quality of life in the community, and-
I agree.
We need to try and make-
I think it adds to quality of life.
Yeah.
A lot of folks that are retired, it gives them a reason to get up in the morning, gives them some exercise to get out there.
And it's related to economic development. If we're trying to attract businesses to our community, they're looking at the amenities and the services that we provide, and if we don't have these things, then I think that hurts us, and so I am supportive of trying to weather this downturn and try to make it work.
Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Prepared to listen to it.
I move that we authorize John Banks, our Parks and Recreation Director, and Joyce Stroshine, our Chief Financial Officer, to begin renegotiating the contract with Four Golf, so that it will be equitable and fair to all parties involved.
Second?
We have a motion by Johnston and a second by Cheetham. He beat you out there.
Just louder.
Yeah.
Ruth, could you please call the rule?
Johnston?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Anon?
Yes.
Super. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with that.
I would add a footnote.
Add a footnote.
Part of the amenities that we provide are related to the clubhouse and the social setting there of golf course, and I think we saw yesterday that we need to take actions and down the road on that.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, just a little footnote there.
Mayor and council, could I just ask, would the council have any direction for staff on any potential relief measures for this season? I know last year, they hit them pretty hard with about an $80,000 loss, and trying to ride out the storm this year hasn't improved. I think it might even be a little worse. I know, I do have permission to renegotiate for 1920. Is there any thoughts on potential relief measures for this season?
I thought that that motion was for immediately.
It is. My intent was immediate, and I would propose that you bring us a proposal. I would mention-
Counsel, what about the, there was a question on the water, the extra expense that they have spent or needed to spend on-
I think that's the beginning point.
Is that what you're talking about on that?
Yeah, right there.
I think that's the beginning point, because that doesn't hit budget so much, that's a correction.
Yeah, I think you need to do that. I would agree. You need to-
I would mention to the council and to the committee that yesterday, I met with a person of substance, which I occasionally do in my business, and I just happened to mention there might be some naming rights available on a new clubhouse, and I got a big smile. I think we need to aggressively go after a new clubhouse at the Riverside Golf Course, and that we formulate a committee to do the fundraising, lift that off these people, and I think-
And go for major donors.
Totally donate it.
I think that's where the Golf Advisory Committee has been moving forward to, and so it's great. Maybe you should let them know who the guy, the person of substance is.
I let the Four Golf people know.
Gerald Myler Golf Course, is that what it was? It was awesome.
Don't say memorial.
Not memorial.
Mayor and council, we were joking with Alan Green with his, you know, 40-year retirement payout and kind of the whooshing sound coming from City Hall, maybe he would be interested.
Alan's not watching right now because he's golfing, probably, so. All right, super. Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Good luck.
We'll move on to agenda item number nine, Park, Ross Park Aquatic Complex, request to construct new concessions building. Parks and Recreation staff will be in attendance to review the current status of the food and beverage concessions at Ross Park Aquatic Complex, and to present the proposal for development of a new concessions facility for council's consideration and direction.
Thank you. Good morning again, mayor and council. We're also joined by-
Stacy VanKirk, Recreation Manager.
And Dave Wokes is also here, if you have any questions for him, he's with Ross Park Drive-In. Beginning in the 2017 season, the city entered into an agreement with Ross Park Drive-In to provide concession services for the Ross Park Aquatics Complex, which they also did in 2018. Prior to that time, concession stand operations were completed by staff in-house. Over the course of the 2018 season, this past season, staff has inquired with Ross Park Drive-In to gauge their potential interest in a longer-term agreement for the Aquatics Complex concessions. The 17 and 18 services were provided via terms of two one-year agreements. Ross Park Drive-In has expressed interest, however, constraints of the current concessions facilities create operational limitations in terms of insufficient space and the lack of ability to incorporate food preparation equipment, which are impediments to long-term viability. These limitations are not new, they've been known for some time. In fact, in 2007, staff at that time had some consensual plans prepared for an expanded facility. However, the substantial cost estimates for the facility, combined of, of course, with competing, other competing city projects and needs, have rendered its development to date not feasible. As a result, staff has tried to get creative and explore some other potential avenues for expanded concession space, and at this time is requesting council consideration and possible permission to construct a new and expanded permanent concession facility adjacent to and partially utilizing the existing pool equipment building infrastructure. And this would allow us to create a 400-plus square foot dedicated concession space, approximately 35% larger than the existing space, and also able to accommodate all of the key food preparation equipment with all of the needed utilities. The materials and services cost estimate for this facility is $44,385, and we included this document here in your packet materials for your reference for a specific breakdown of costs. The new concessions facility, if council were so inclined, would be constructed using the proven formula of in-house Parks Department staff expertise and providing a significant cost savings to the city during construction. Approximately $25,000 in budget authority for fiscal '19 is safely available in the Aquatics Complex account, so 004-1306, which could be used for construction of the new concessions building. And the benefits of the project would be significant for staff and for the Ross Park facility. It would allow for negotiation of a long-term partnership with Ross Park Drive-In for concession services, and combined with the ability for staff to pull back all city staff support for the concessions. Also, the ability to centrally relocate the concessions to the highest traffic area of the facility, the ability to convert the existing snack bar facility into a private rental space with the goal of generating additional revenues. This would allow Ross Park to incorporate all of their popular menu items for facility patrons, and staff would fully expect that this development would increase our facility patronage when the word gets out. patronage when the word gets out and result in additional revenues as well. And probably the most critical benefit being staff's, I guess, continued ability to concentrate on their primary function of the facility being to facilitate the safe use and enjoyable use of that complex for the community. Should council be supportive of staff's request? It's also requested that council consider granting permission to utilize capital contingency resources or recreation fund resources in the amount of approximately $19,385 to help fund the remainder of the concession building project cost. Just to note, use of recreation fund resources would require an exception to current reserves policy. Not impossible, but would require an exception and just, so council would be up to speed on the impacts of that if it were granted. At the end of fiscal '17, the recreation fund was at the 74% level of the three-month target reserve levels. That was after absorbing the zoo operations from 001. If permission were granted to utilize reserves, this would result in a 3% impact to the reserve level, taking that level to 71% of the three-month reserve level, down from 74%. With that, the goal, if council were so inclined, the goal would be to begin construction in October with a planned completion date, with a new building fully outfitted with the Ross Park menu and ready to cater to the patrons for the '19 season. With that, be glad to answer...
Which one is the pool equipment building? Where exactly?
That is, I guess, as you enter the facility from Second Street, it would be the far western...
Be closest to the tracks.
It's the largest pavilion, covered pavilion area that people go to. In the back with the bams and the vending machines.
This plan looks like it would build a building. What about equipment?
The equipment, we would provide kind of the bare bones, the utilities, I guess, a, some type of venting system or ancil system would be necessary, whether we staffed it or whether the concessionaire staffed it. But the concessionaire would commit to providing all of the needed equipment to incorporate their menu. We would provide the shell and the utilities and the capability for them to do so.
And most everything in the current building would shift over, so they've been operating and they have, so all that stuff would go as well.
Could you explain to me how the financial arrangement is between the concessionaire and the city?
We have a system where the last two years, we have provided one part-time seasonal staff person to help with their operations, kind of in realizing the limitations of the sales ability over there. So we have done that for the past two years. In 2017, in the form of a staff person, 2018, in the form of reimbursement for a staff person. If this were to happen, we would like to pull that back completely and have them on their own because we envision a substantially increased ability for sales. With that said, the current agreement is we get 10% of the revenues over $50,000 in sales. Last year, they did not reach that. This year, I believe they were just over $50,000 in sales. So it's, the best that we ever did when we were running it in-house, I want to say was what, 35 or...
Oh, yeah, 38,000.
38,000. So you get the professionals in there, they know exactly what they're doing, they get economy of scale on the items that they purchase and I'm not sure we were as controlled on our portion sizes for things as they are as well. So they're the professionals and they've been able to grind a little bit more sales out of that facility, but it's very limited. So with a new agreement, I wasn't sure what council was going to say. We haven't really talked exact terms and conditions, but we would envision a percentage of revenues over a certain sales amount.
Would that be more palatable or a rent of the space?
It's a significant staff savings to us to not have to operate that facility to the tune of, you know, 35 to $40,000. When we negotiated this and were working with Ross Park to gauge their interest and see if they wanted to come onboard, the most important thing to me was to be able to shed that cost and also the responsibility. I had a, unfortunately, a recreation manager that was, you know, during the summer just worked seven days a week. There's too much to do for the staff resources, so to relieve her of that and also to allow staff to kind of not worry about food and drinks, but rather the safety of the patrons. So that was my main goal, rather than trying to make it a huge revenue generator, was to shed the cost of staff and the responsibility, which was a huge savings in and of itself. But going forward, I can see, like I mentioned, a percentage of revenues that maybe kind of ratchets up at certain $10,000 increments or something to that effect. I haven't put a ton of thought into it yet.
But Ross Park Drive-In isn't going to close, right?
I don't think so.
Twenty-second.
No, the Drive-In will stay where it is and this is just going to be an addition.
They just didn't want this to become an alternative.
Yeah, we're closing this year on the 22nd.
I think it's been a great thing for the both parties personally. I think it's been good for staff to focus on what you're good at, which is swimming pools and you're not so good at cooking french fries and hamburgers and stuff like that.
Nope, we are not.
We're pretty good.
I didn't say you're bad. I just said you were great at it, so.
And I think too, one thing to look at is that area where the concession sits right now, that is a shaded area. And so to look at that to become an actual rented area for people who want to run out for birthday parties, I mean, that's been something people have wanted and we do not do. We don't reserve areas. It would, it's another revenue source coming in that we have not been able to tap, let alone parties that can utilize and enter from the Ross Park Pavilion down there, the Lower Ross. So I think, you know, there's an untapped thing that we have not been able to capture before and we can use the current building to store a birthday cake or still run a soda fountain out of, you know, to give them some limited menu options out of there, working with Dave and the concessionaire over there to maybe provide pizzas and things like that.
Roger.
Joyce, how much do we have in our capital contingency fund right now?
I believe what has been committed at the end of '18, you're going to have an excess of about $240,000, $240,000 from what we had in there from the prior year plus what we had come in.
Okay.
So you have about $240,000 that hasn't been committed. Now, those dollars that have been committed probably won't execute in '18. They'll execute in '19. And then, of course, you have your new dollars that are coming in. So you have, I'll be honest, John and I spoke about this and I said, my preference would be capital contingency dollars. I don't like getting into exceptions because how we have gotten healthy is by being committed to that reserve policy and so use the dollars that are available for this purpose and leave that alone.
That was my thought. If we have, I think we just go capital contingency and get it done and we keep your fund hole going forward. That'd be my proposal.
Is that a motion?
I'm a little confused about action items because I feel like here we're doing study sessions, so the motion ought to be, I encourage you, I move that we bring this forward to, before the council and that the funds come from our capital contingency. That's what I would say is an action item. Can we make decisions here? We can make decisions. We can, we had that discussion with them and... Okay, well then I move that we move this project forward and we go to capital contingency to fund it.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Adamson.
One question. Is there a potential, if this were located in a different spot, that we could get business from the street, like people at the zoo, that sort of thing?
Stacy, you can help me. My opinion is, I think it needs to be, it's currently located where we have the potential to have people coming from the street and the zoo, but we don't seem to.
No, in the six years that I've been here running that facility and, you know, a couple of, four of them at least, running the concession stand with that side window, we would get, you know, a few people, but even when pavilion rentals are going on and things like that, those people are providing their own food. So the walk-up just isn't what you think it would be. And in that, I mean, Ross Park Drive-In is just down the street and so people tend to stop by on their way in or out of the area to get their food from Ross Park Drive-In.
The other part of that, Councilman Johnston, is the current location is kind of off to the side and away from where all the action is at the facility. We're proposing to take it and put it right in the middle of where all the congregating takes place.
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion by Bray and a second by Adamson. Ruth, would you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon? Yes.
Super. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counsel. We're really excited about this. This is the first step, we think, along the lines of Riverside Clubhouse discussion, if we can inspire someone for a major donation for naming rights, possibly for a new slide, maybe a new amenity. With the way we're evolving, I really think we're keeping a lot of people here from going to Lava because we have similar amenities. So thank you very much.
I would, Dave's here and I'd like to publicly thank Dave for kind of taking a chance on jumping in the middle of that because it was an unknown and it was, we always look for ways to help local businesses and that just seemed to make a lot of sense and so thank you for doing those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
We'll move on to Agenda Item Number 10, Additional Proposed Fiscal Year 2018 September Budget Amendments. Finance Department staff will be present to, will present detailed information on additional proposed fiscal year 2018 September budget amendments. A public hearing to review the proposed amendments will be held on September 20, 2018.
Joyce Stroshine, Chief Financial Officer for the city. Today I'm proposing additional two amendments for the September amendments. So we have two amendments affecting two funds. The public hearing notice has been published in September 7th and will publish again tomorrow on September 14th. And today we're holding the study session. The amendment public hearing will be on September 20th and the ordinance consideration will be also on September 20th and we will need to publish the full ordinance. So the first one is for the Zoo Improvement Fund Amendment. It's for $9,628. Back in 2017, the Zoo Improvement Fund received a grant for the wetlands project. Unfortunately, the project wasn't completed in '17, so it carried over into '18. And so this amendment is to provide them with additional authority to expend those dollars that they received in '17. And so this is fully funded by the grant. And the ambulance fund, our fire department went to the county for additional funds for overtime and expenses, so totaling $52,800. And they have approved that they will provide the additional dollars. This is the amendment to give them the authority to expend those dollars for that purpose.
This is county money? This is not city money, is that correct?
Right, that's correct. It's all based on the county contract and so he has to go before them if he asks for additional funds. They have to approve, but he still has to have authority from us because we expend on our side. And so the two amendments total $62,438. Now, at the end of the hearing on September 20th, no action will be taken, but at the end of the meeting during the ordinance section, that's when you'll consider the amendments for approval.
Okay.
Okay.
This is action item as well. Just so that if you want to take action, you can. You don't have to take action. We have to take it to a public hearing?
Yeah, you have to take it to the public hearing.
On these, so you know, on these, everything we do has to have action items or you cannot take any action. And so if you, if you want to say, "Don't bring it," then that falls under action. Okay, I'm going to bring it.
I can tell you, there's two departments that are very happy that you're saying that.
But just be, so you know, because it says action item, doesn't mean you have to take action either. So we can just give some instruction to do that, so. But we have a motion on the table to bring into the council agenda on the 20th.
Second.
I have a motion by Bray and a second by Lyric. Ruth, could you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Bray?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to Agenda Item 11, which is the adjournment. So we're going to adjourn this meeting. Let's not spend a lot of time on that one. Let's not spend any time on that one. We do have an executive session we'll be moving into and I believe lunch is here as well. And so we'll move to the Paradise Conference Room.